Six o'clock, I'm going to call this evening's Board of Selectmen meeting to order, if we will. If we could start off with Phil Sherman and Frank Anzalone on the 2022 Whipple Hall Project Committee update.
Thank you for inviting us here tonight. I'll start by trying to put a timeline on where we've been, where we are, and where I think we're headed, and then we'll get into the furniture questions. So discussion started at a selectmen's meeting on March 21st after the bond was approved under the auspices of the previous Building and Facilities Committee. After the dissolution of the BFC and the appointment of the present committee, another discussion was held on June 9th, which started to move things forward, where the selectmen approved retaining Frank and also indicated that the project should set the building up for the decades ahead and to do it once and for all, in so many words. At that meeting also, it was decided that the balcony would be eliminated from this project, the work in the balcony. Since June 9th, the committee has met six times and dealt with the various elements identified in the Myers report and the memo to the selectmen of March 31st. So where we are today, Frank is closing in on preliminary documents within the next few days. We've been approved to retain North Branch as construction manager for design side services, and we expect a contract for them, which we'll work with Kim on in the next day or two. He actually promised it prior to this meeting. Where do I think we're headed? North Branch will hopefully be able to give us estimates based on Frank's documents by December 12th. We have a committee meeting scheduled on December 12th, at which point, well, let's just say the pricing may come in more than we would hope. So at that point, the committee will try and turn this thing into something that can come back here within the allotted $600,000 and divvy things up in terms of a proposal. So we meet on the 12th, and the select board, of course, meets on the 15th. On the 15th, if things go well, I hope that we can finalize the scope of the project. So we'll have, you know, first past numbers, estimates. The select board, at that point, with any luck, will be able to decide, this is in, no, we don't want to do this, let's push this or pull that. And then at that point also, we should have a better sense of project scheduling from North Branch. I know there's some questions raised as to when the work will actually start. Frank and his team will then move into final design based on that final scope. I'm thinking at this point bidding in the March timeframe and construction out into April or thereabouts. But again, that leaves a little bit of slack if there are things that come out of December 15th that need public input or a second meeting, which is going to jump over the holidays. So we've left a little bit of room in there. In other words, it's not moving as fast as it could on those out months for that reason. So now for the furniture. The committee, I want to talk about the number of people we're contemplating, and this is important because it gets hardcoded into a bunch of decisions. So the committee felt that the project should be designed for 75 occupants in this room as a reasonable number. This is less important for furniture, as you can always buy more furniture later on, but it feeds into the HVAC design. So you have to assume a number of occupants to then lead to sizing of equipment that doesn't change later. So typically, you would design this for what I'll call a normal high level, but not that once-in-a-while peak, you know, everybody jammed into the room kind of a load. So remember that 75 number, because that's a number that the select board, of course, needs to agree to. If we normalize the Myers budget to 75 seats, because he priced 150, he carried about 41 five for chairs and 14,000 for 10 tables, total of 55,000, based on a Han product. And Frank can get into the details on this in a minute. This does not appear to have included the cost of the dollies, the storage dollies. After discussion, the committee agrees with others who have brought up that the type of chair that the library uses is a suitable type of chair. So 75 chairs, five dollies, you can stack them 15 high, 30% with arms, 70% with no arms. That's a number that was brought up way back, so that probably wants to just be confirmed and reviewed. And then 12 allowing for casters for the people on a board or, you know, hearing. Total cost, about 21.8 for the chairs. I'll let Frank and Amanda get into the details on the tables, but the estimate reflects a high-quality table with a laminate surface. The $3,260 unit cost includes electrical wiring on the tables and a courtesy curtain. If the electrical stuff and the courtesy curtain are deleted, the unit cost is about $2,300. Of course, we could always drop back to just a basic stackable table, similar to what's here now, for less than that. Our intent in coming up with these estimates was to present what could be done if other parts of the budget fit. We don't know that yet, and of course, if the selectmen approve. I'll let Frank get into the details on the potential for storage, but I want to conclude that as part of trying to put some order to the construction process in town, it's important that pricing for all the project elements be known, even at a preliminary level, before one element is allowed to drive the discussion. We believe that this discussion can happen on December 15th, and we would encourage the board to wait until then for any purchasing decisions. So Frank, I don't know if you want to get into, or Amanda? We should at least describe the storage.
Okay. So, this is Amanda Raymond. She's from Studio Sage. She's the interior designer, and we asked her to help us with this. When we were first brought on board, it was, we kind of worked with what Dennis Myers had, but then talking to staff and the committee members, and we started to go in a different direction, and we brought a sample of it, because it's in the library. We felt that we needed to stay away from fabrics. Fabrics need to be cleaned, they're hard to clean. The other thing with fabrics is, once that batch is run, it's over. You'll never get that fabric again. And they were pricey. This unit is still being made, you can still get casters for it, you can still get arms for it, and they're easy to clean. And what we're finding out, at first we thought it was a pricey unit, but it's really not that bad. So these are the chairs that we would propose. We know they work well, we know they're comfortable, and we know they hold up. And they're easy to stack and to store. As far as storage, this would be five carts. You stack them on the cart, and you roll them into the back room here, that's where we would recommend where to store them. The tables were a little bit, we had a lot more discussion on that. In an ideal world, which is kind of the direction we headed, they're on wheels, and the tabletops fold, and the tables can be, not stacked, but lined up, and they could be stored in the back room. 10 tables would be a very tight fit. But as we were talking, there's very rarely a time where there's not a table out somewhere, and the table could always be leaned up against the wall, for lack of a better term. And yes, it would have been, it was requested to get cost with a curtain and to have all the electronics, to be able to plug something into charge, to be able to plug in a, was it Wi-Fi at the time? No, data. But there's a price associated with that, and we have all that here for you. And that's the short version. Any questions? Any concerns?
So, well, the first question is, has been raised, actually, in listening to Will earlier, whether or not, indeed, there has been input from the town moderator and Will with regards to the needs during voting for tables. It appears in the proposal that 10 of the tables are 30 by 72, and another 10 are 12 by 60.
No, it would just be the 30 by 7, only 10 tables at 30 by 72.
Okay, so I guess, you know, in terms of the chart and how things are positioned during voting, is a question relative to how that would fit or not fit?
Oh, as far as the table needs for the voting, no, we'd never, I guess the committee can answer better to that, but no, we have not had any discussions with them.
Yeah, I mean, is the concern the length of the tables?
Well, I think it's a matter of how they're positioned and mapped out. Certainly, Michael has a very elaborate kind of place. Will, do you want to speak to any of this, since you raised it earlier?
I guess it's, the big thing is the concern about how they fit into this room. Storage is also a huge concern, because you're not fitting anything in there with the election stuff that's in there. So then, and we can't go there, so then where do we go, I guess would be the other question. I'm not saying this is you, but it's just questions that need to, I'm looking at you.
Yes.
But yeah, and Michael has these elaborate maps of what needs to happen, and if these tables get too much longer than the existing ones, elections don't work and that sort of stuff. So I would beg you to talk to the elections team before going forward with this, because we use it a lot, and we like being here. And for this project to get done and us to get kicked out of here because it doesn't work wouldn't make sense, to me, anyway. So having a conversation with Michael would be an excellent first step.
And the second comment I have is something that Kim has raised, which is that, and I agree, it seemed like in earlier discussions, the tables were really about the training needs of law enforcement, if we were not to be relocating the police department to a new building. We're on a different track at this point, so I'm thinking that that may definitely change our table needs relative to not needing to have as many training tables, because I can't imagine who else is going to be in here training. It's much more about the chairs and making sure that for meetings, the tables are professional and set up, and I guess that then also raises the question, do we need to be electronically wired at this point or not? All questions that need to be asked, and it certainly is going to impact the price point as well.
As far, I'll answer the electronics, yes. There's, it's quite an expensive number. And the question to you is, do you really need it? You know, you've made it this far without it. Yeah. Yeah.
You're absolutely right, Nancy. That 30 person, which is the 10 tables, was a seminar style.
Right.
In talking with Kim, the sense was that even if the PD was not here, let's call it, the amount of training for various departments was going to increase and not decrease. So the 10 is a number. It can go up, it can go down. You're using five tables just tonight here, and if the desire is to not set up, I'll call it a seminar kind of a thing, that's fine. But that's, you're right, the 10 number originally came from the PD.
Right.
We're not going to have an answer to that presumably before this project proceeds.
Understood. So I was just raising those questions relative to, you know, where we are and our thinking about this. And then the chairs, as I understand it, 30% are with arms, without arms?
Well-
More without or more with?
30% with arms, 70% without. Again, that was a number from the previous board. I'm not even sure it came from the board, I think it was, it was Kim and the committee just putting our heads together. So that can shift one way or the other.
I think that was originally when we talked with Dennis Myers, and the idea was that board members should have arms and theater could go without.
Right. So we could cut, the arms are not a big, big part of the cost, but they cost something, so.
Another issue that was raised, I think Adam brought it up, planning board members like the swivel, so, because they tend to turn back, unlike the selectmen generally can look forward.
So again, the latest looking at this, which is reflected on the second estimate, was to allow for 12 chairs with wheels. That's $126 they clip in. If we like them, you put them in, if you don't, you take them out. So it's not a major thing to add to that number or decrease it.
And just to clarify, these wheels lock, is that correct? The wheels at the school do not lock, and that's been problematic for a number of reasons.
These are locking casters.
Good, okay, thank you.
And I think, Frank, you brought up the point that they may not like them once they get them, that you do tend to skid around on a wood floor. But again, it's 126 bucks out of the estimate, and if they went away later, it's not a deal breaker.
Got it, okay.
It's also something, too, with these particular chairs, that if they were favorable, then you could order, you could purchase more. So if you started with a certain number, and if they ended up becoming popular, you could add on, you could place a separate order just for casters piecemeal.
But again, looking at casters for the board, not for the audience, where you don't want chairs floating all over the place.
Exactly. Okay. Bill?
Well, let's just stay on the chairs for a few minutes, but even 30% of 75 chairs is 20-some chairs.
22, yeah.
We don't have any 22-person boards, even with the staff. So that sounds, that sounds high to me, even though it's a small number, but just to react to it.
Again, I-
I think we talked about 15 chairs, because I think the biggest board is the Budget Committee with 10.
The planning board's about the same if they have their-
Probably 15 would do it, maybe.
But going on with the chairs, I'm looking, I think it looks to me like maybe we have 30 chairs laid out in the room right now, there, plus maybe 40. So I'm trying to envision, and I thought at some point somebody was going to do a plan to show us what 75 or 105 chairs looked like.
Yeah, that's been-
But I'm trying to envision, when would we have even 75 chairs in here? The night the planning board met, I think there were Jay, 60 people in here, maybe? I think you were counting them.
You mean for the total assembly occupancy?
Yep.
Is significantly more.
Chairs, I was trying, we had, I think about 60 people sitting that night. Oh, I know, I mean, cram in here, but that was a big meeting.
And I think it was 60 audience plus the 10, 12.
Okay, so, okay, okay. So I mean, that feels like that's maybe the right number, but that means there would be another 20 chairs out here. But obviously, we have way too many now, right?
Bill, there's other activities that the place is used for, for example, spring goes, the Irish Festival, and this place will hold a chair.
Again, I'm not sure whether we're doing this for the absolute maximum use by an outside party, are we?
Well, we're clearly not doing it for the maximum use. I think the occupant loads 130 people legally.
Yeah.
We're trying to pick that normal high use, right?
That's why, yeah, I'm just-
The number that floated to the surface.
But we did want to be able to accommodate other activities like that, or fiddlers that have been here, or a number of other activities that have taken place here for the Center of the Arts have held, Christmas plays and other kinds of things.
And again, more furniture can be bolted on later.
Right.
Larger air conditioning can-
Right, right, exactly. Well, that's why you've asked, but again, the question is, are we going to do, air condition the room for 130 people when the normal occupancy is 75 or less?
The intent is to do the 75 and open the windows if-
So at least from my perspective, these chairs, plus or minus with the arms, doesn't make much difference, and what's a glider?
Those are the wheels?
Those are the casters.
Those are the casters.
Yep.
Because, because it says, the first one is an armchair, four legs, glider, non-caster.
The glider is this piece on the bottom, which is in place of the caster, sorry. So this right here is the glider, so it's basically what is-
Beautiful, okay, thank you, I just-
No worries.
So, you know, if this is, I have not been involved in the earlier discussions. If those are the chairs, that makes everybody happy, and they like the color, then I think the chair part is fairly easy. The tables are a much bigger discussion.
Well, the chairs, again, you know, after the committee were informed about the deterrence of having a fabric chair and cleaning it and so forth, but there's long been support for the chairs that are used at the library.
Yeah.
People find them comfortable, they seem to be, you know, able to be cleaned, so on and so forth, so.
I've known they've been in the library for 12 years, so they're probably in there longer, and they're still in good shape.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So, that's why we landed at that point.
Yeah, as far as the arms, the casters, the quantity, the committee came up with these numbers, but they're not set in stone.
But we wanted to make some progress, and there was something we could do. It seems to me we're fairly close to agreeing on the chairs.
Yes.
And we could just sort of, you know, do that and maybe get that part started, because with all due respects, Phil, you know, I don't think the total project is going to, the chair decision's going to change the total project.
Chairs are not going to keep me up at night, no.
The only conversation is storage. I'm going to kind of look to the committee and to you, to where do you want to store them? We can tell you the size, we can tell you how many fit, but-
But clearly, there are two elements that we don't have anything to do with. One is where does the election get stored, and two is whether the PD stays in this building or not. So if the PD goes away, there's all kinds of potential for storage. If somebody wants to store tables in that room, then the election stuff has to go someplace else. And short of that, they're going to get stored the same place you're storing them now, because it is what it is, right?
But there are going to be a lot less of them, and they're going to be on dollies.
It will be five, five dollies at maximum.
Five, 15 highs. So it'll be half of what's back there in the corner right now.
The chairs will take less space, the tables would take more if we-
I'm talking just about the chairs.
Yeah.
I think it's very unlikely the election people are going to want to move out of that room there and haul that stuff out to some other part of the town and bring it back in three times a year.
Again, the storage is not so much under our control.
No, I'm just, I'm telling you, my opinion is that, you know, even if we are stuck with this room for storage, I don't think it's going to go in the, the closet's going to, Will's hiding, where is he?
I'm hiding.
Yeah, I don't think that-
You're correct.
I don't, I don't think the election team is going to be enthusiastic about having its stuff someplace else in town.
I think that, I think there's a short-range plan, that things will have to stay somewhat status quo, and we'd have to work around it.
Right.
But I think the long range goes to what Phil has said several times, that we move forward with the police department being relocated, there will be plenty of storage in this area, and that should be looked at by the committee, the Bucard Committee, relative to that, including if it's more convenient to move the election stuff somewhere else on the property and have the chairs and tables stored in there. I mean, I think we need to be open to alternatives.
Yep, on the property is the key.
Yeah, as long as it's here, and I was just going to say Bob probably has an opinion as well on moving the election, there's his hand, so.
Yes, Bob?
I know, unless we get new voting booths, the ones that are in there now are extremely heavy. My concern is, where can come from, from somebody moving them, something to take into consideration.
The election booths are heavy?
Yes, barrier.
Steel.
Steel. These will struggle to lift one box.
Funny, they were very fragile during the election and falling apart.
I'd like also, there's a lot of wasted space under that stadium. It's a way to design something, put maybe tables on there.
Just open it up with-
Small body issues as well.
But I don't know, I'm just trying to see if there's something we can agree on tonight and maybe put it aside. If the chairs seem to me to be, you know, within the five-yard line of getting a goal here.
I would think that the chair discussion is independent of storage, because you've already storing, and you've got the same thing.
Right, I think we move forward with the chairs, and I-
I haven't heard from Janet yet, but those chairs and these numbers are there.
I would ask that maybe Kim come back to us with the final numbers that somebody wants, because we're ambivalent.
On chairs.
You're either going to get it tonight or not for-
Casters, 75 chairs, right? So we need to know casters, we need to know arms. That's, those are the two variables.
We're questioning-
Yes. Steve.
Arms. Everyone sitting out here has their elbows or their arms, I think, and they have force resistance, or they, I would say, go along.
So with all due respect, part of the idea of the chairs is that people come in different sizes these days. So one size with arms does not fit all, and we have law enforcement with utility belts that have to have a chair.
They don't have a seat. They don't have a light issue. They shouldn't run camp, no, no, yeah, no compromise.
So the point being that we wanted to be able to accommodate different-sized individuals as well as utility belts and other circumstances.
No, they already just will hold on. Because of your chairs, you know, anyway.
Again, we can just adjust those numbers, you let us know what you like.
Okay.
We're talking a difference-
Janet?
$29. I'm good with ordering the chairs. Maybe we should have a compromise, maybe order more, like half without arms and half with, so that we can accommodate different sizes. Maybe that would be a thought on that. And I do think that some of them should have casters, so that the planning board, and I imagine the zoning board, would like to be able to look at the screen behind us.
The sense was that we'd have 12 or 15 for the board casters, but no casters out here.
Right, okay, yeah, I'm in agreement with that.
Just give us the number.
Correct.
Okay. Can I ask a question about the tables? Can we go on to the tables?
Well, could I ask a question about your question?
Sure.
Somebody needs to decide whether 50% with arms or 30% with arms, or only the board with arms.
I'm fine with 50%.
50%.
50. Democracy at work.
50. Come on, Steve.
100%. Arms and arms.
100% arms?
What's an arm cost?
We can't do that.
Arms are $19.
75.
Or $29, $29 for arms.
So 30 bucks a chair for arms.
70% and 30% was, what?
30 bucks a chair for arms.
And without arms?
Well, the uptick is 30, $29 to put arms on it.
Is there any difference on the dollies that are needed?
They stacked 15 high regardless.
Yeah, they just fit into each other.
I can't tell if they can be taken off. I can ask this specific question, but it's looking like it's one solid piece.
So the original proposal was 30/70, 30 with arms, 70% without arms. So other we do, you want to flip it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So 22, 32, 32.
Can we go to, can we go to tables?
Less comfort does make for shorter meetings, but.
I think at this point, we should just focus on the, on 10 tables for the meeting setup, since we're not talking about training tables at this point. We need to get input from the town moderator and Will relative to, we need to get final input from them relative to the size and so forth. But for me, I would like to see, you know, professional tables and professional chairs for the board's meeting.
I can say that having folded tables up on Tuesday night, that there, I think there were at least two tables that were eight feet long, and they're none, as opposed to the six-foot tables that we're looking at here. So without, Will's hiding again, but I feel quite certain that the moderator will insist that we have some eight-foot tables for his purposes. He's very clear, when the bell went off, I want those eight-foot tables here. So it sounds like we haven't had that discussion yet about the eights versus the tens and so on, or the sixes or whatever it is.
So we started with eight, and refresh my memory on aisles, because that, when it's in a seminar style-
No, I think it was the available tables. I think there's, there's, not to make things even more convoluted, I think there's a table that the board sit at, and the election tables are very different. The ones the board are, have, let's say, more bells and whistles, because they get pulled out all the time. The ones for the elections can be tables that fold like this, just something a little more sturdy than the plastic. That's my opinion, but that's, unless you feel differently.
I think not, Frank, because one of the problems with these tables right now in this room is the wiring issues, because there are no, what are they called, ports to put the wires through and so on, and I've also had the privilege of crawling on the floor trying to keep the electric lines tied up so that the lights that are on the tables, blah, blah, blah. So I think, I believe that there ought to be multi-use tables, and the question is, how many of what size? And I think if you haven't sat down with Will and Michael, then that still needs to happen.
So back, way, way back at the beginning of time on this project, Kim did a survey of- of all of the users of this room and probably it's time to tune that up and add whatever details people want, maybe somebody out there needs more casters or not, but I, I don't know.
Well, and function as well, I mean, do all of them need to be set up so that they can be table or...
Right.
For voting, I mean, so that you can have lights at least so you can see what's going on. Again, so the question is whether or not we're going to ever move to the point where everything is electronic and people can plug in laptops or whatever, but I don't know that we're there, but we need to discuss function as well.
As far as lighting, I don't think you'll have them on the table.
And the mics not on.
As far as lighting...
It would be nice to have the mics set up too, so that we don't have to keep operating on batteries in 2022.
I think as far as the power, it's going to be for the electronics, the tablets, the laptops, lighting, we will improve the lighting in here, so it wouldn't be as much of a concern.
Well, again, with due respects, if you saw during the election, when you're sitting, unless we get all of these new pads that, uh, Will wants, you know, you're really talking about, you know, very small print with people, older people whose eyes are, like me, aren't always good and you're working with a ruler and a pencil?
Yeah.
And, and so on, so you need those close lights there, particularly when it gets dark, you can't, it's not, it don't matter what you do up here.
Yeah.
The specification is providing 110 power as well as USB, right?
It is, yes.
So if somebody wants to put a desk lamp for election or any other reason, they just put a lamp on the table and plug it in.
So we can accommodate that?
Yeah. It's got an outlet, I mean, it's just a plug.
Okay.
So can I go another place on the tables?
Sure.
Whereas you have a, a manufacturer or a brand name or something for the chairs, it looks to me like the tables are all custom tables, I don't see any manufacturer, I went online and found the Han table that I thought was the original proposal and it's less than six hundred dollars for, not with a modesty panel, but with the rest of the table with ports, and I, so that's about the same as this quote is for just the frame, so I'm really confused as to how we get from six hundred dollars a table to three thousand dollars a table.
Let, let me just state one fact and then I'll turn it over to the experts here, Dennis Meyer's budget was fourteen thousand for ten tables, so fourteen hundred a table, that was where he was at, and Frank and Amanda had trouble matching up where he got that from, you're aware of the...
Oh, absolutely.
Chairs and all of that, so we started from scratch, but dive in.
But I, I have a very hard time seeing how we get from a Han between, a Han nested multipurpose thirty-by-seventy-two table for five hundred and forty-five dollars to these numbers.
So, so we can look at that, when we started looking at the chairs, the Han was significantly more money, so we kind of...
I'm not talking about the chairs, I'm talking about the tables.
But that, we just kind of started to stray away from Han because of that reason, we'll, we'll look at it if it means...
But this proposal, see, I mean, I, I don't want to be disagreeable, but this, this proposal has a frame, a tabletop, a modesty panel, there's lots of different pieces and I don't know why, it sounds like we're building it from scratch as opposed to taking a table that exists.
So this particular vendor, Bill, this particular vendor that we are sourcing from, so, so there, there is a brand name for the table and I can provide you with that information, but this particular vendor has so many different options that we called them out so the board could choose what the cost benefit was, to be able to have the, the power ready, to have the casters, to have the wire manager clips, the modesty panels, these were all things that we had brought up as a priority in our six meetings with the committee, that these were things that were important to them, so what we did is we actually just kind of broke them down so you guys could be able to decide, okay, X amount of dollars for modesty panel, not something that we're necessarily...
Well, the modesty panels are important, but...
For sure.
But if you take out the electronics, it's still twenty-six hundred dollars per table for just a table.
So I'm not necessarily sure what, I'm sorry? I'm not sure what the particular table you're referencing is made out of, I think that these particular tables are a heavy-duty rated commercial product as they should be for the use, and so what we did is the frames are really heavy, they're steel frames and the, the top is a really nice high quality, I mean, what we were asked of by the board is to be able to come up with something that was attractive, that would elevate the overall aesthetic of the space, so we thought that this particular table was a really good quality and would be lasting at least the twelve years that we know that these chairs are lasting, so I can look at what you found and, and compare the materials, I'm not sure if we're comparing.
But then you, you just said steel to me and that bothers me because I also on Tuesday night lifted these tables and we're glad they weren't any heavier.
Yeah, these are actually flip-top tables on wheels.
On wheels.
So these never get lifted, the top flips to store them.
So Bill, we did look at these, you do have to collapse the wheels and you do have to lug them around, these you just flip the top and wheel them wherever you need them.
Assuming...
Yeah.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
No, and it, you know, ultimately it's up to you if you, if you, there is a cost to that comfort and there's a cost to that, I don't want to say level of quality, but we want these tables to be here for a long time and we want them...
Well, that's why I thought that Han was a, you know, high-quality brand, so enough, I, I'm just very concerned that you, we've, we've got sort of a Cadillac here when a, probably a, a mid-sized Ford would do the job.
That's, that's fine, you kind of at least let...
I mean, I think you, you accomplished that with the chairs.
Yeah. The tables were easy to operate, anyone could wheel them around, anyone, there was no need to pick them up, but we could, in fact, I think we did look at those some time ago, it was one of your originals.
Right.
Why, why don't we work up a comparison of the Han versus this product, itemize what the differences are, we can get it back to you, we don't even need a meeting, but let me ask what the sense is on electrical and courtesy panels, which you don't have right now. That's about a thousand dollars a table, at least on this model.
That goes to...
Yeah, these are, I'm looking at that, these are definitely higher quality, you know.
Well, let's, let's spell that out in detail and get back.
Janet?
All right, so Phil, my, my question is, so these tables will be able to have plugs on them, I can't envision what that will look like, all wires running from the table.
You'll, you'll sit down at the table and there'll be a plug in front of you, the people who set the room up will either plug a pigtail into a floor outlet or run it over to the wall and plug it in.
Okay, so that's what...
Bill won't be crawling around on the floor to plug in the laptop or the what.
And we can connect up to eight tables in a row.
They daisy chain, so you can...
Together, okay.
And then I guess my other question is this, so if we, we do have that capability, will we get new mics without batteries? I mean, these things have not worked because the batteries keep failing, so...
We've got a...
Two completely separate issues, I'm disagreeing with you, but...
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, if, if we're going to get this kind of a table that has that capability, then our mics should work.
We, we, we do have a purchase order in to get rechargeable mic, so we can charge these each night.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and you could prob, you could probably leave them plugged into the table, but I would talk to...
That's underway now.
That's on the way now, yeah.
So that, that's not part of this project, although it's a valid need, no question about it.
And it certainly can be part of the long-range plan and probably should be part of the long-range plan to have a permanent mic system of some sort that isn't operating on batteries, but it's not part of this plan.
All right.
So it sounds to me like they need to go back and do some more work on the tables?
Yes. I personally think that the, the modesty panels and the electronics are important, looking into the future in ten years, I mean, we want this to be projected as a professional business arrangement for our town meeting, so that's my recommendation, yes, I think...
Modesty panels for the board and, and the audience or just for the board?
Just for the board.
Yeah.
I'm mostly concerned for the primary area of any of the board's meeting here.
So Kim, again, if you could give us the number of tables that that means, depending on which boards are meeting, then we can...
Right, I don't think you need a modesty panel for the setup for voting, but I do think we need to have some electronic capacity for voting, so I think that we need to have that sort of, that's why I said, both function as well as the length and the numbers in terms of placement, we need to get, you know, straight on that.
So if we limit the courtesy modesty panels to the board, whatever the number of tables that is...
Whatever configuration is.
Kim can work with Will or he can come to one of our meetings and we can talk about lengths of tables, that seems to be a simple answer.
I would suggest Michael needs to be part of that conversation.
Okay.
Since Michael is the king of the tables and the table cloths and the, whatever, bunting.
And then we'll get back to you with a comparison on the quality issue, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and you've automatically said the flip-top, I, somewhere along the line, I heard somebody suggest that actually flip-top was, took up more space because you do have them all galleys together.
Yeah, so what happens with the flip-top, the top simply flips and has the, the wheels, the legs stay where they are, so once you put one table in place, you can line them up one after the other.
They nest into each other.
They nest into each other, the other tables, you fold them up and stack them on top of each other, stack them as high as you want, within reason, of course, but, so they do take up more space, but they are a lot easier to move around.
Yeah, I, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just saying I, I don't know if we've had that discussion because I've heard some folks say, why are we doing flip-top tables? And then the question is with the electronics underneath them, does that widen the nesting?
No, no, they're all, the privacy curtain and the electronics all nest together well.
Just, I just, you know, whereas the chairs, we've been able to see them, it's harder to visualize scale there, I guess, but, okay.
So are we good with the flip-top?
Yes.
You think so?
Yes. So do you have what you need relative to the next moves with Kim and...
Counts.
Will and Michael Todd and, okay, counts, all right, let's get clear on that. Thank you, thank you for bringing the chair.
That's it?
We'll move this forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Amanda.
Okay, public comments?
Good evening, Colin Beasley, King Hill Road. I wasn't here last week, my apologies, I was out of town, so I, I do have some questions I'd like to have asked, I'd like to ask the select board on the police station analysis that's going on. I know there was a brief discussion on it last week and I really want to focus on the community engagement and keeping the community informed and getting broad public participation aspect of the conversation, so to that end I have three questions. One is when will the select board make public their report and analysis of the Beulah property and County Road, assessing their property against the same criteria established by and reported on by the Police Station Site Review Subcommittee, so that we can have a discussion of that site against the two proposed sites from that Subcommittee? That's my first question.
I, I think we said that last week, we're working on the, against that list in the, what was it, Appendix E of your report, and as soon as the police chief and police staff and the engineers and Kim all have had a chance to, and Adam to work this through, then we will come forward, as we did last meeting, we showed the first conceptual design and this will continue until we've come up with the final proposal that we're going to make at town meeting, but it's on, it's an ongoing process, it started last meeting, you could see it was in the paper this week, and I think the chief and Kim and Adam are working on their end of it and Jones and Beach are working on their end of it.
Yeah, I'm not talking about Attachment E.
Talking about what?
I am not talking about Attachment E, I'm talking about the criteria and the table that was set up by the Subcommittee that was used to compare one site against the other, there's a list of, a list of characteristics that was reviewed by the Subcommittee, and I was looking for some insight as to what the new site is for those characteristics against the sites that were already reviewed.
I'll let the chief answer that question.
The ideal characteristics or preferred...
Preferred characteristics is the term, yeah. When will we see a report that shows the new site against the two proposed sites with respect to those preferred characteristics? A specific commentary on each of those characteristics and how this new site compares to those characteristics so we can compare that to the other two sites.
The board wants a report prepared, I can work on it?
You said the other two sites, you mean, other three?
Well, there, if, if I recall correctly, the, there were two primary sites and a secondary site, the Crescenti property was considered a secondary site, the Broom site and the Beulah site across from the post office were primary sites out of that report.
And I think in the meantime, from office statement, more of the Beulah lands have come up for sale.
Correct.
So that's why that's considered...
That's fine, I, I understand the reason for it, I'm just asking for when will we see a report or some commentary so that the public can have, have that dialogue about how that site with respect to those preferred characteristics compares to the other two sites? Or three, if you want to put the three on there, it's fine with me.
Okay.
So that's one action, so I guess that's TBD?
Yep.
Okay. Question two, I was hoping the select board, and I'm asking if the select board can lay out a schedule as to when the various steps are expected to be completed and how and when the community will be engaged to hear the results and discuss the impacts, areas that should be addressed according to some schedule, in my opinion, include, and there may be others, the land costs, which I know we have, the land development cost, including water and sewage, the building cost, CM, architecture, engineering material, the Bucuret disposition and its related cost, plans for and associated cost of the remainder of the land being proposed to the Beulah property and the total tax impact. And within that schedule, I was hoping that we could identify, if you looked at the handout, I don't know if it was a handout, I guess it was, it was shown on the screen, and I was able to get a copy, thank you, Kim, I know you put it on the website, footnote six, very difficult to read, footnote six says that per the town and on the zoning ordinance, Article seventeen, public buildings shall be permitted in all zoning districts after a public hearing before the planning board, which will determine whether or not the erection of such a public building is in conformance of the terms and spirit of the Site Plan Review Regulations. This review shall be accomplished prior to authorizing the expenditure of public funds. So in that long list of activities that we need to look at, I was hoping that we could get a schedule from the select board that would share how we would get presented that data, how the planning board gets filtered into that conversation, and the public can then get sort of that on their calendar so that we begin to gauge each of those conversations. So that's my second request. And then my third request is, listen, we know the police station is going to be a fairly exciting conversation in the town, it has been for the last couple of years, and I don't think that that excitement is going to go away, there are different people with different opinions in the matter, so I'm hoping that we can get this information in advance so that that dialogue can be happening, everyone's walking into the meeting for whatever discussion we're going to have with the full information that they need, and as we go through these meetings, I'm hoping that we can get, and this is my third request, can we get the information submitted to either on the website and or with the agenda in advance, rather than coming here and looking at it on the screen, which is hard for us, if it can be, if it can be disseminated in advance, we can download it, look at it, prepare for the conversation. So my third request is to get documentation in advance.
Okay.
Okay?
Julie noted.
Thank you for your, your time, appreciate it.
Okay, old business, let's move forward with the fiscal year 2024 budget prep review and final budget. Kim, you want to start and then Lynn can...
I'll start, so you should have the updated twenty-one-page budget detail that Lynn has made the changes that you discussed or agreed to at your last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So she will go through them, and you might, and just point to the areas, hopefully we didn't miss any, so go ahead, Lynn.
Okay. So on page one, last line in executive, we added two hundred thousand dollars, actually we were...
Thank you.
That line went from fifteen thousand to two hundred thousand... That line went from fifteen thousand to two hundred thousand, and that was to include, encompass COLAs and salary study. Just one line item for that. No changes on page two. On page three, down at the bottom, we've lowered the assessor services down to ninety thousand. Kim and I tweaked that a little bit, found a little bit there that we could lower it. On page four, at the top, we lowered the legal as per a request from the board from fifteen down to ten thousand dollars. Page five, down for Whipple Town Government Buildings for Whipple, we lowered the maintenance and repair down to five thousand. I think that was a request from the board also because we're going to be doing so much in here to begin with. Then, flipping to page seven, at the top, we, oh, no, that's, sorry, that's just a total that went down. Down at the bottom, we lowered the Chamber of Commerce number down from fifteen thousand to twelve-five per request from the board.
Mm-hmm.
On page eight, the police general equipment went from sixty-five thousand down by fourteen thousand to fifty-one thousand per Chief Cobb and her reassessment of the pistols that were going to be needed. On page, wait for it, twelve, at the top, we went from upgrading dirt roads, we went from ten thousand down to zero. That was it for that page. Then, on page thirteen, for the transfer station, we went up for waste disposal. We went up to the one sixty-two. That's an increase of forty-two thousand per Bob's recommendation on new pricing. And then, all the way to page seventeen, I adjusted the debt service for twenty-year terms rather than the fifteen or the ten that I had in there, so that lowers the debt service down. It's a net reduction of forty thousand. But I did increase some of the debt service interest because the rates are up a little more for a twenty-year. So, that went up, a net increase of fourteen thousand. On the next page, I took out the, I accidentally put in the eighty-two thousand for the roof at the fire station, which is being done this fiscal year.
Right.
So, I took that out of the capital outlay. Then, on page nineteen, I reduced all of those transfers to capital reserves, as we discussed. Most of them went to half. The first one sidewalk project went to zero. The building maintenance went up to a hundred thousand. The library went to thirty-seven-five, and then, two other accounts went to zero. That's gravel roads. And records management. So, that reduced that number significantly. And then, that was, we reduced the sewer also by ten thousand dollars for the transfer to capital reserves, like we did everybody else. And then, that was a net change to the bottom line item of the budget. It's, the total comes down to eleven million, twenty thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars, which is a net change of four hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars reduction. That's all I got, I think.
Bill?
I have no changes.
I just have a question. The salary wage study, that two hundred thousand, that's a placeholder, and that includes the wage study and the cost of potentially any changes to steps?
The cost of the actual wage study is in this current budget, so the-
That's correct.
The cost of it will be done. So, say, say it gets done in July or September, the two hundred thousand will be to fund, if there are increases-
There are changes.
And for the COLA. And in the coming weeks, as I hear more about other towns and COLAs, I'll present some information to the board. You can make some decisions on that, potentially. But that would all come out of that two hundred thousand.
So, what was the COLA guesstimate that went into the two hundred thousand at this point?
None, really. Bill came up with the two hundred thousand, yeah, last. And so, in the coming weeks, that number could change. You may decide, you know, once we get more information from area towns, you may decide that we don't need that much, if possible.
We're talking about people's pay starting in July of twenty-three.
Right.
And so, we need to have, go as far as we can before town meeting to figure out what this should actually be.
Yep. Okay. All right, Janet, any questions or comments? Thank you, Lynn. All right, do we want to vote on this?
Sure, I move that we present to the Budget Committee the numbers shown on the cumulative budget sheet dated November eighth, two thousand twenty-two with a bottom line of eleven million, twenty thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars.
Okay, second that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. We have our budget proposal. Yes?
When will we have the updated budget sheet? And we, and the chairman and the captain?
All right, thank you. Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah. Can you speak up a little?
This mic works. No, I, it was suggested we could pick our packets up at the meeting. I learned slowly, so I would hope that I could have these a few days ahead of time to study, and including the regular budget sheets and this that breaks down the changes to the capital reserves and so forth. When they might be, when might that be forthcoming?
Well, I can email you these tonight.
Yeah.
Because the selectmen didn't make any changes. So, these, in the comparative budget, I can email tonight. We're not in the office tomorrow. It's closed, so we'll have all paper copies by Monday morning. And so, what I said to Chris is that you could come and get it in advance. Anybody who doesn't make it to the town office, we will bring it to the meeting.
Okay.
So, tonight, you can look at these online.
I wait up expectantly. Thank you.
I won't forget.
Okay, moving on. New business, setting the 2023 dispatching rates.
So, you have the-
Yep.
Printout. We have calculated the rates using the same formula as we have in the past. November first, the chief tabulates all the calls for service from all the towns. We plug those in. It's charged against the 2023 budget plus the capital reserve payment. So, those are the figures. We will send out the amounts to each town. These amounts become effective January first.
And do we have any sense? I realize we will send these numbers out, and they don't know what the numbers are at this point, but I'm sure they're expecting that there'll be some percent increase. Do we have any sense as to whether or not any town might reject this?
Not right now. Have you heard any chief? No?
Okay. All right, Janet, comments? Bill?
Nope.
All right, then, I think I'll make a proposal that we accept the proposed dispatching rates for 2023 as proposed in this document.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Town administrator report?
Mike Williams and I. Mike Williams is our IT person, working on a grant for cybersecurity. We're going to join a grant that the state has. They're going to help the towns and cities ramp up their cybersecurity. We had a call today with somebody from the state IT department, and the town is really doing pretty well. I mean, Michael has introduced some things like our multi-factor authentication and going to a .gov, so we're actually ahead of some towns, so that's, that's good news. Lynn Putnam with the Rec Department and Ben from the library participated in a career day at Colby Soria College, getting the word out that the town is an employer. So, that, I think, was good, right?
Yeah. I think it went really well. Got to, a lot of kids, you know, kind of, well, we drew them in with candy, but that's, but, you know, they were like, oh, you have lifeguards. Oh, you know, with literary students, so, you know, we're excited about the library, and where are you located? And so, it kind of got the name out there a little bit.
Good.
And you'll see a picture in Municipal Matters, so make sure to, the next issue, you'll see proof there. Finally, our tax rate, the state has not issued it yet. That wasn't for lack of trying on the part of Lynn today. I know our tax collector's very anxious to get it, so as soon as it comes in, we'll publish it. So, we await it. That's all I have.
Okay. I realize we've been meeting week to week, so there's not a lot. Committee meetings, reports?
Yeah.
A housing, affordable housing meeting this morning. It's seven thirty-eight AM.
Which is also the town everything.
All right, yeah.
Anything else? Okay. All right, so we have the usual litany of upcoming meetings and special events. So, we had talked about whether or not we would still need to have a meeting next week. Okay, unless there's a crisis, I would say that we won't have a meeting then. And we'll go through the holidays anyways into December. Any other business to come before the board?
I would like to just commend the moderator and the town clerk and their staffs, the assistant moderators, the ballot clerks and so on for what was an incredibly smooth election. I had the opportunity to be here the entire day, and I can't say that probably any place did any better than we did. So, Will, thank you, and I hope the word will get out to Michael and to all the other people that worked so hard getting ready for this and for performing against an unusually large turnout, an unusually large number of absentee ballots, an unusually large number of onsite registrations. I should say, the supervisors, the checklists also. It was just a great show, I think, by people working together, so thank you all.
Okay, if nothing else, then we go on to approve pay vouchers and permits. Thank you all.